Study session is to discuss and have staff present the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. I want to thank those members of staff that have joined us today to give us this information. I appreciate everybody making time for this. I know there's a lot going on, so thank you all in advance. Thanks to city staff for putting it together. As a reminder, we're having this meeting by video conference. If you're joining us as a member of the public, because we are unable still to meet in person, interestingly, the ability to meet this way expires November 15th, according to state law. So in the event that this meeting is ended for some reason, failure of technology or otherwise, it will be rescheduled for another time, most likely in person. Your guess is as good as mine. So with that, our first order of business is to receive the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 study session. I need a motion and a second from our planning commissioners. Actually, I guess I should call roll first, just to be sure. So I'll do that at this time. Ward one, Nate Clare. Ward two, Janice Powers.
I'm here.
Ward three, Mary Coffey. Ward four, Mike Privet.
Present.
Ward five, Matt Engel.
Present.
Ward six, Asa Highsmith. Ward seven, Kamal Pennington. I am present, and Rusty La Forge is absent, I know. So we do have a quorum, so I will take a motion on the receipt of the minutes.
Commissioner Coffey, I move approval.
I have a motion, Privet. Did you second that? I thought I heard you say that.
Sure, I'll second it.
That's what I thought. I have a motion to second to receive the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 study session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are received. With that, I will turn this meeting over to Erica Van der Sipen, who is going to lead us in this discussion. And I do see Commissioners Clare and Commissioner Pennington have joined us. So, welcome, and Erica, go right ahead.
So we're here today to present the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2025, and we're just going to jump right into it. We have four departments presenting today: Public Works, Parks, Airports, and Utilities Departments. And Eric Winger is our first department presentation with Public Works.
Mr. Winger, before you jump into things, I'll just ask the commissioners, because of our tight timetable today on our meetings, if you would, please write your questions down as each department head goes through their presentation, and we're going to hold questions until the end to ensure each department head has time to get their information out before we begin asking questions. So with that, Eric, please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. Eric Winger, Director of Public Works, City of Oklahoma City, please present the Public Works CIP plan for 2021 through 2025. Much what I'm going to show you today, Public Works assists many departments in implementing capital projects, and we work very closely with the Planning Department. Much what you're going to see today in the presentation involves Bike Walk OKC, of course, the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan, but we also work with police, fire, parks, transit, and a number of other departments as well. So my appreciation to the staff that helped us assemble the presentation day, including Billy Little and Debbie Miller, Justin Henry, and then a lot of our division and section heads. We do a summary of the next five years. You're going to see that the CIP for Public Works is over $500 million, 501 total. You're going to see that in 2021, 2022, they're much higher than the years that follow, and this is really because of the Better Street Safer City program. These are two years where we actually continue to complete the temporary sales tax projects. So it has basically doubled the amount of workload and output that Public Works is able to produce over these next two years, but you're going to see that taper off as we migrate back to just the bond program. As we look at the 2017 bond, we will be averaging somewhere between $70 and $80 million going forward each year. Next slide will show the types of projects that we work on. Just quickly, I think it's not new, but street widening and resurfacing projects are two of our highest project categories, but we also do intersection traffic control, street enhancements, drainage, bridge, sidewalk, and also facilities. These next two slides that I will show, this is the division of our work by project type. Next slide, please. This is where, again, you're going to see that streets, when we talk about resurfacing and widening projects, makes up the majority of the work that is coming. It's more than 80% of the total, but you'll see the other totals broken down here as well. Inside of just the streets component only, the navy blue portion of this slide, if you were to look at just the arterial and residential street projects, that makes up for about 67% of that total blue area, but also included in the blue is sidewalks, street enhancements, and also street widens. This next slide is the work by funding source. You'll see that the 2017 Geo Bond Program, over 286 million, it's a little over 50% of the total, makes up the share. But on the left hand or the upper left-hand side, you're going to see that Better Street Safer City sales tax that's still being expended. It is the second largest, and it makes up about 30% of the total. So I'm going to go through a number of examples, just to kind of highlight some of the project types and categories. This first series is going to show as street widening projects, appears as pages 98 and 99 in your book. There's 15 projects that are shown on this drawing that'll make up about $60 million. Of those, to kind of give you an idea, in the 2007 bond program, we had over 48 widening projects. In the 2017 program, the number of widening is significantly reduced, where we've actually taken a lot more attention towards resurfacing existing streets. In the 2017, there are only 17 widening projects. But this list, over the next five years, makes up five. These are some of the examples. These next few slides of completed projects, just to give you an idea of what completed widening look like in Oklahoma City. Of course, I don't think these are new to you, but this is Anderson and Choctaw Roads. This is typical construction. Obviously, utilities are relocated, you'll see new utility poles, you'll see finished widenings on both of these. We do have five widening that are currently, excuse me, four widening that are currently in design that will begin here in the next year. We have Southwest 59th County Line to Highway 152, Southwest 15th from Check Hall to Mustang, Southwest 15th Mustang to the Kilpatrick Highway, and then Serra Road between 15th and 29th. So move to resurfacing projects. These fall into two categories: arterial streets, you'll find on page 93 of your booklet, and the residential, you'll find on pages 95. On the arterials, there's 93 projects totaling $93 million on residential, 71 projects totaling 189 million. So on this next slide, you'll see a map of those locations. All of the arterials identified in yellow, all of the residential in the CIP are identified in the blue shaded boxes, which would highlight those, again, those residential or those neighborhoods. So collectively, there's 164 total projects that are on this map. These next slides just show, again, some examples of some of the completed work. This is Ann Arbor from 23rd to 36th. This was about a $420,000 project. This next one is another residential, it just shows some of the construction, just showing progress. This is Southeast Quadrant of Hefner, 122nd Council to County Line. This was about a $2.3 million residential resurfacing. As we look at arterial widening, this is Air Depot. This is, of course, under construction, and these are resurfacing projects. So these, again, these aren't widening, these are, again, increasing that road condition for Oklahoma City, which continues to remain one of our residents' top priorities, as evidenced by the recently received citizen survey. As we move into intersection and traffic control projects, these are on page, it starts on page 101 of your booklet, and we have 11 projects listed at $13.8 million. These are the locations that are highlighted with the yellow dots. You'll see that they spread throughout Oklahoma City. In these next couple of slides, we'll show you some of those typical examples of projects that we complete. This first one is a mid-block crossing, this is on 23rd in front of the Cleveland Elementary School. This was a $287,000 project that was finished just a couple of years ago. This next project's Mustang Road at Southwest 44th. Again, just showing intersection enhancements, this one included a lot of pedestrian features. You'll see the content of crosswalks, you'll see the new ADA access ramps and all the new strike. We have another category of street projects, and these are our street enhancements or our street skate-type projects. These are the ones that we work very closely with the Planning Department as we work the program and work with stakeholders. These begin on pages 97 and 98. There's 27 projects that are shown on this map for a total of $51.6 million. Some of these projects are currently in design. This next line shows the proposed streetscaping in the Passo District. This is going to be between Northwest 27th and Northwest 30th, Chertel to Harvey. This is a $2.7 million project that is in the final plan stage as we work with stakeholders in that area. This next one is a street enhancement on Portland from Northwest 23rd to Northwest 36th. You're seeing a lot of pedestrian enhancements, integration of bus stops, landscaping, lighting. This is a $2.6 million project, estimated to start construction in the spring of '21 and finish in early 2022. Drainage projects are included in the CIP. This is on page 83, there's 13 projects totaling nearly $40 million. You'll find the locations on this next drawing, or this next map. You see that they're actually dispersed citywide as well. In the next couple, we'll give you examples of what some of those drainage-type projects look like. This is erosion control and bank stabilization. This is Gabian Baskets at Northwest 122nd, just east of MacArthur. You'll see the patient's lighting library in the background at the top of the slope. This is slope walls on Brock and Twin Creek. This is a project that's expected to be completed here in just the next month or two, but again, it's just channelization and channel improvements on our drainage projects. Our next project category is Bridge. You'll find this on page 79, nine projects totaling $15.7 million. This next drawing map will show those locations again throughout Oklahoma City. And then just as a couple of examples, this is a completed project on Wilshire Road. This is what those bridge projects look like if you look underneath. You don't normally get to see this from the traffic side, but this next slide will show you what it looks like from the roadway. Again, this is the completed one on Wilshire between Frisco and Cemetery. This next one's the Memorial Road Bridge, it was replacement, it's about a quarter-mile west of Serra Road. Moving on to sidewalk projects, there's a number of these on page 91, 63 total, totaling $24.9 million. These are inconsistent with Bike Walk OKC, again, those cooperative projects where we work with many city departments. And these are just some of those examples. This is the Windsor Neighborhood Sidewalk, about $1.3 million, and it was accepted just earlier this year. This next one is a Better Street Safer City project near the Angie DeBeau School. It's $288,000, but we continue to do a number of sidewalk projects in between the bond and the Better Street Sales Tax Program, literally installing hundreds of miles of sidewalk citywide. And our last project category, and as we finish up the Public Works presentation, is facility projects. On page 87, you're going to find two libraries projects totaling $11.8 million, but Public Works actually works closely with other departments, and so this is a complete map of all the facility projects, including those that you may find in the Parks portion, police, fire, and also city facilities. And just some of those examples of what some of those projects look like, it's like the Belle Isle Library. This is an $8 million project that's currently in construction, expected to be completed in February of 2022. It's an expansion and renovation. This next is the Early Wine Golf Clubhouse, which also is estimated to start in early '21 and finish in late 2022. And then the last one, which recently just had a groundbreaking ceremony, is the Willa D. Johnson Recreational Center, $11.7 million. It's starting this month, expected to be completed in early 2022 as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I know we're holding those, but I'll be prepared to respond to anything that comes up at the end of the meeting.
Eric, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation and your time today.
Thank you.
Erica, who's next?
Next, we'll have a representative from Parks, it's Doug Cooper, the director.
Good morning, this is Doug Cooper. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to the study group today about our capital, five-year capital. First slide, please. One of the most important things that we've worked on this past year in preparation for this presentation is an update of the Park Master Plan. Those of you that have participated in the planning, study group in the Planning Commission for longer than six years will know that the Parks Department had a master plan completed in 2013 and 14. The City Council adopted the Park Master Plan in May of 2014, but as in all living documents, such as master plans or even the Planning Commission's own Plan OKC, they are a living document and have to be revisited on a regular basis to make sure they stay current. Since the original Park Master Plan was actually developed and adopted by the City Council prior to the current Plan OKC was done, we denoted or we discovered in working with the planning staff that some of our assets or decisions that were developed in the original master plan were not in complete alignment with the Plan OKC. So we went down that path to make sure that our master plan and our development areas matched up with Plan OKC's development areas, so that we would be in alignment and making sure that we were taking care of our citizens as the Plan OKC is, we are an element of Plan OKC. It's obvious that we want to make sure that we continue to improve the health of our community, improve access to existing parks. Our goal is to have every resident within a half mile of a park asset for their health and well-being, and we are constantly trying to create new ways, to create new opportunities, including working with different school districts to allow our residents to have access to playgrounds or sports facilities going forward. Next slide. Our park projects aren't quite as lucrative as Eric's Public Works, obviously, but we are targeting approximately $147.5 million through these facilities, and we'll get into, if we'll go to the next slide, we can talk about how that's broken down. Project types are broken down here. The majority of our funding is coming from Geo Bonds, but you can see the golf improvements are taking up 20% of our $147 million, and then we get into other park facilities. We'll go to the next one, please. As was in Public Works, the majority of our fees or funding for these improvements are coming from bond projects, approximately 93%. This is a combination of actually 2007 and 2017 Geo Bonds. We're still finishing up some of the 2007 Geo Bond projects going forward, but we also have a portion going into, from impact fees and better streets, just as Public Works said. The next slide shows the map of where these projects are. The renovation of our existing, our older multi-use trails, such as the Burke Cooper Trail around Lake Hefner, the Hefner to Overhouser Trail, the Grand Boulevard Trails, those are all parts of our older trails that the Safer Cities funding is taking care of. The next biggest project is the Deep Fork Project as it relates to our multi-use trails. These will be closing up our loop system so that you can functionally ride on almost 100 miles of trails all the way around our city through these projects. Go to the next slide. As a kind of similar image that you had, but the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center is actually funded in the Parks five-year capital plan. This will be a full-service recreation center, a little over 28,000 square feet, indoor swimming pool, indoor gymnasiums, fitness centers. We actually will have a water slide that exits the building and then comes back into the aquatic area. We're extremely excited to bring this to Ward Seven. It's an opportunity, it's to add to our older inventory of community centers, and it is in keeping with our master plan. The next big item is our wayfinding sign system for our multi-use trails. Again, with 100 miles of trails and, you know, more and more people using our trails, not just for bicycling, but for their daily exercise, a lot of our trail systems go through some remote areas of the city, and it can be confusing of where exactly you are in the city, and we have experienced, unfortunately, some incidences where we have had cyclists have accidents, or we have had citizens out jogging, become disoriented or fatigued, and trying to figure out where they were in the trail systems to get emergency managers, EMT and things along those lines, out to their locations, been difficult. So this is a much-needed, a long-anticipated program that is coming to fruition through this, through our capital projects. This is a depiction of the Deep Fork Trail, I already talked about that. This is a very extensive and very arduous project because of the way the Deep Forks banks and it's just alignments through our northeast section of the city. We're excited about having this project. The next slide shows the Greenway Trail System. This will connect the River Trail System with the Grand Boulevard Trail System with the Katy Trail, and again, it's the southeast quadrant's connecting loop. So again, you should be able to start at Lake Hefner and ride all the way around the city and end up back at Lake Hefner on multi-use trails. Next slide. Early Wine, well, my page. We just had the dedication of Emmanuel Perez Park yesterday. I was well attended, we probably had 200 people, a lot of veterans participated. This is honoring our Medal of Honor recipients that the state of Oklahoma has had. It is named for a World War II Medal of Honor recipient, Emmanuel Perez Jr. So if you haven't been to this part of the park system, I really enthusiastic think you should go visit this park, just to reflect on what our veterans give up on a normal basis, let alone to be a Medal of Honor recipient. Part of that, the Wiley Post, go ahead. Wiley Post Park is being redeveloped, and we hope to actually be able to create a entry off of Walker Boulevard. We think flow through the park is a dynamic asset for a lot of residents throughout the core of the city, and I'm including the core of the city going all the way down to Southwest 23rd and the Capitol Hill area. This will be the primary active location for even people enjoying Scissor Tail Park. They will be able to come out of downtown, walk through Scissor Tail, walk across the bridges to Wiley Post to enjoy even higher-end sports activities in Wiley Post Park in the future. The next one is the Early Wine Clubhouse. Again, this one is funded in our capital campaign, the capital program. It is over, the construction is overseen by Public Works, but it is funded through our Geo fundings. Next is back into the park system. North Rotary Park is getting a facelift, as we have done in a lot of our 170 parks. We have put in walking paths, new playgrounds, safety surfacing, and new shelter areas, so that our public have a better health environment to participate in our park system. The Lions Children Park on the next slide, got rehabilitation of the, I'm sorry, I got to Will Rogers. The Indoor Tennis Center just got a new clubhouse, something much needed, adding restrooms right adjacent to our indoor courts. This was much anticipated by the tennis community. Our next slide is the Lions Children Playground on the banks of Lake Hefner. Again, new safety surfacing. We are obligated to be able to provide a falls zone. Saw a child falling off of any of the playground equipment there, would not have life-threatening injuries from those falls. Sandwich Diggs Park, our next slide, playground enhancements, new walking path, new trails. The next slide is real important to our athletics program. This is 100% handicap-accessible baseball diamond, so that we can have wounded warriors playing baseball again on this field, but more importantly, our children that are either wheelchair or physically challenged, have crutches or things along those lines, they can learn to love and appreciate the sport of baseball at our Route 66 Park, and this was some of our 1% art that went through Robbie Kinzel and the Planning Commission's, or the Planning Department's Art Commission's programs. And our final slide is Burton Park, and again, playground enhancements, new shelters, and walking paths. Again, we will be prepared to answer any questions at the end of this segment. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Airports Department with Director Mark Rennerberg.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Can you see me okay and hear me okay?
Very fine. Great to see you, Mark.
Okay, great. Nice to be with you all this morning. It's been some time since we've chatted with you, so look forward to the opportunity to provide our plan for you. And Erica, to your word, I'm going to ask you to move the slides for us, and I'll just let you know when I need to go to the next slide, so if you'll move on. So one of the things that we do is we show our five-year capital plan in several ways. So our first way is going to be by fiscal year. So for the next five years, you can see we're at $177,100,000, and we break it up. And usually, in the first two or three years, you see a lot of heavy planning, because we're more into either design or actually bidding out projects or underway with projects. And so for FY '21 and '22 and '23, we have the terminal expansion project, which is ongoing, our Station 2 project, which is in the pedestrian tunnel. We have our terminal access roads phasing project that we'll be doing over the next few years, as well as a significant program to our upper bridge deck, which I'll talk a little bit about later. Next slide, please. We also look at our projects by the summary of location, and as you might expect, Will Rogers World Airport has much more infrastructure than our other airports, and so we do have a lot of dollars allocated to Will Rogers over the next five years. Wiley Post Airport is a very significant general aviation airport, as well as Clarence Page Airport. It's a little bit more of a grassroots airport for the flyers that are more weekend warriors type, but we have great facilities at all three of our airports. And I carve out Mike Monroney or Nautical Center here also, because the Airport Trust owns several buildings at Mike Monroney and also deals with a lot of infrastructure over there. And our agreement with the FAA is that for the lease revenues that we take in, we are responsible for a lot of capital and maintenance projects. Next slide, please, Erica. We also talk about our projects by type, and this is by funding sources. So six, or I should say, 16% of our funding will be relegated to the terminal principally right now. As you know, that might be related to the terminal expansion project, but it's also dealing with Station 2 upgrades that I talked about in the pedestrian tunnel. It could also refer to projects that we have with our check package inspection system. It could also refer to projects that we have with our check package inspection system and again, the upper deck. If we look clockwise and we go to airfield improvements, we have 25% of our projects are allocated for our airfield and that's mainly runways and taxiways, aprons, airfield lighting and airfield signage. Building components are related to the things that we maintain in our buildings and typically for any buildings that we own and lease out, we're responsible for items such as the roofs and structure exterior and things like that. As far as equipment, quite a bit of equipment that we purchase over the next five years. This deals with all of our field maintenance equipment when we do our snow and ice removal equipment, just equipment that we do throughout the year. We have four to 500 pieces of equipment, everything from road graders and dump trucks to, to weed eaters. And it also includes our aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicles that we have at Will Rogers World Airport. We build a lot of other infrastructure for development purposes. This would be roadways, taxi, taxiways, of course, new taxiways and water and wastewater facilities and also drainage projects. And then, as you know, we have a significant amount of parking facilities at the airport and so 10% of our projects go towards either rehabilitating or renovating or even building new parking facilities with regard to our surface lots and garages. Next slide, please. So this is identifying all of our projects by funding source. And if you again, look at the top left, passenger facility charges represents 13% of the funding over the next five years. So this is the $4.50 fee that is on every departure ticket that goes towards our capital program. This is a very significant revenue source for us because it pays for a lot of leverage when we go out and bond projects. For instance, on the terminal expansion project that we're underway with today, 75% of that project is being backed by passenger facility charges. The customer facility charges is 3%. It doesn't represent a whole lot of funding sources for the next five years, but it is significant. It is also a $4.50 charge on a per transaction for any of the rental cars that are rented here at Will Rogers World Airport. And this actually maintains the operation and funds the operation of the rental car facility at Will Rogers. I want to talk about the Airport Trust contributes about 48% of all of the capital for the next five years. And this is where it is very significant for us these days because we have such a reduced number of passengers which are flying at this time. Our passenger numbers now are about 50 to 55% of what they were at the same time last year. And so we're going to be discontinuing a lot more and we're deferring a lot more capital projects over the next couple of years until we can rebound and get those traffic numbers back up. I mentioned Mike Monroney Air Nautical Center, so 10% revenues are basically going to be allocated for the FAA. And then we have our Airport Improvement Program grants with the Federal Aviation Administration and the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission on the FAA grants that we get to maintain our airports. Typically that's a 90-10 ratio, 90% of those projects are funded by the FAA. So the Airport Trust only has to put a 10% sponsor match to those, to those projects. So that's a tremendous amount of leverage that we get. Next slide, please, Erica. Want to visit about just a few of the larger projects that we have ongoing, just so you have an idea of what we're going to be facing the next couple of years, if you'll go to the next slide there. First, going back to impacts though, let's talk about our impacts. So back in February of this year, we were actually planning on a $79 million capital plan. However, in March of 2020, when COVID-19 hit, we very quickly had to adapt and we actually submitted to the budget office, a $70 million plan for the next five years, or excuse me, for 2021. And then even from that time until we actually had the Airport Trust adopt the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 21, that was another $25 million reduction. So just so you know, in this fiscal year 2021, we have reduced our capital projects by 37% from what we did last year. Next slide, please, Erica. We're very proud of the terminal expansion project that we're underway with now. We're a little over 70% complete. The picture to the left is a 624 square foot skylight that is in the top of the town square that we call it after you come out of the new security checkpoint we're building. And then on the picture on the right, you can see a little bit of the town square there on the bottom part of it. On the middle part to the upper part, you see a 4,000 square foot mezzanine area. And many of you who may have flown through Will Rogers several years ago, before 9/11 even, we had the observation tower that we had to tear down as a result of 9/11. But we're now starting to see airports and we're doing this too. We're bringing back another feature where this mezzanine area is basically non-secured area. So you don't have to have a boarding pass in order to get up in this area. So it's great for the public, whether you're seeing somebody off on a departure or waiting for an arrival for family and friends or whomever. This is a great area where we can have vantage views to the airfield and also into the concourse down below. Very excited about that. Next slide, Erica. This is an airside picture that we have, just looking at it from the airfield and from the two-story town square area, the new construction that you see on the left, all the way to the right, you can see that we're building basically four new gates. This four gates will ultimately be nine gates and a concourse based on demand going forward. But we're going to have three airline lease gates and one airport gate that has a slightly larger hold room, a slightly larger ramp area to handle wide-bodied aircraft. And we're also positioning ourselves one day, hopefully happen, have international arrivals and departures again out of Oklahoma City. Next slide. I mentioned Station Two. I know that's an unfamiliar term, but basically this is the first bank of elevators you get to when you exit the terminal and go into the pedestrian tunnel. We're also renovating the building, which is on top of the two-story that serves hourly parking and also premium parking. This is undergoing a complete rehabilitation or reconstruction with roof and infrastructure and waterproofing. It's going to be a huge enhancement. One of the things that we did was we took out the escalator that you may remember, it was very narrow. It sometimes wouldn't even handle today's sized bags. And so we took that out. We're renovating the two elevators that we have in the pedestrian tunnel at Station Two and we're adding two more elevators. So we're going to have four elevators, which will be serving the public, which will be a big enhancement. Next slide. We finished up our roadway Phase One project, which was basically torn up inbound terminal drive all the way from 54th Street into the terminal. It was quite a mess this time last year, but it looks absolutely fantastic. So we have two other phases. We're looking in the next five years, we're going to do outbound terminal drive from the terminal outbound to Southwest 54th Street and also redo the intersection at Amelia Earhart and Terminal Drive. Next slide, please. I mentioned the Station Two, or excuse me, the upper deck, bridge deck, the upper level of the ticket counter where you drop off passengers. And then this, what you're seeing in this picture on the left is the lower level, level of baggage claim. And, and the picture on the right shows one of our large eight expansion joints that we need to maintain and repair. This is just like any other bridge in Oklahoma. It takes, you know, periodic rehabilitation and maintenance in order to keep it, keep it safe. And so we're doing a multi-year project. This is an FAA project, which is contributing 90% of the funding for this project. And the next slide shows actually a great enhancement. You know what baggage claim looks like now today outside of baggage, baggage claim in the lower level. It's a little bit dark, a little bit dreary admittedly, but now we're going to be looking at some superior aesthetic enhancements and lighting enhancements, security bollards. We're putting in a better wayfinding and signage and we're looking forward to brightening up that space going forward. And you can see it's going to look very, very nice with some architectural enhancements as well. At Will Rogers World Airport, it's been probably 20, 25 years since we've done a major runway project and this is runway 13 and 31. We're in design now and we're looking at a multi-year project to reconstruct this runway. It's an important runway. Airplanes land and take off into the wind and we have some variable winds here in Oklahoma. And so when the winds are favoring the northwest or the southeast, airplanes really depend on this runway a great deal. Next slide. At Wiley Post Airport, just some categories of projects that I've listed over the next five years. We have a parallel runway system at Wiley Post. We're looking at widening the west parallel runway. It's 5,000 feet by 75 feet right now. We want to extend that another 1,000 feet in the future, but also we want to widen it to 100 feet. There's a lot of large aircraft, corporate business-sized aircraft that go into Wiley Post. It's a great airport. It shows how much commerce is happening in Oklahoma City. 70% of all the air traffic in Wiley Post is transient traffic. It's not base traffic or it's not the local traffic. So we're looking forward to that project to get that extra margin of safety for those larger aircraft to use that west parallel. Looking at about $3 million in various drainage improvements that are landside and airside, as well as a crosswind runway rehabilitation for Wiley Post Runway 13 and 31. I mentioned Mike Monroney Air Nautical Center and this is the dollars that we have allocated over the next five years. One reason is fiscal '21 is so large is that the base maintenance building, which is one of the Airport Trust-owned buildings, we have come up with a creative cooperation with the FAA and with the Airport Trust that if the FAA wants to renovate one of the Airport Trust buildings, we will participate in that funding to the extent of our less or responsibilities. For instance, the roof and structure and exterior building envelope things we're responsible for, but the FAA is responsible for the rest of it. And so there's about $7 million that is included in that particular rehabilitation and that's why that number is so high. And that's quick. Sarah Welch told me to keep it within 10. I hope I did a good job doing that. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the capital plan or anything else you may have questions on the airport.
Mark, we appreciate it very much. Thank you. And, and I was on mute last time, but Doug Cupper, thank you as well for your presentation. We appreciate both of them very much. Before we move on to Mr. Browning from Utilities, I'll just say in case you're joining us a little early for the school's discussion, that portion of our meeting will begin at 11 o'clock. So if you're coming into this wondering what's going on, we're talking about capital improvement plans right now. But with that, Erica, do you want to introduce Mr. Browning or Mr. Browning? You ready to go? Go right ahead.
Finally, we have Utilities presenting and it's a representative from Utilities, Crystal Kowalek will be representing.
Good morning, Chairman Cravens and Commissioners. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. All right, this presentation is to discuss the capital improvement plan for the Utilities Department. And this will start on page 105 of your proposed capital improvement plan. Next slide. Thank you. The Utilities Department developed core business initiatives to align with council priorities. The capital program, although aligned with all these initiatives, has specific focus in water supply, reliability, resiliency and regulatory compliance. Next slide. The Utilities Department provides water, wastewater and solid waste management services. And here is a depiction of the overall capital program for our department. The program is about $1.7 billion. Water is the largest component of the program, approximately $1.2 billion, and the majority of this is due to the water supply improvements, more specifically the Second Etoka Pipeline, which is about $800 million. Wastewater is about $531 million and solid waste management is about $21 million. Next slide, please. Thank you, Erica. And now we're going to look at each section of the capital plan, starting with water. The water capital plan is split into three areas, water supply, reliability, resiliency and general improvements. The chart to the left shows the total annual dollars by fiscal year and the pie chart shows how much we are spending in each area. Water supply is the largest at $829 million, which majority is new pipeline. Reliability and resiliency is $313 million and general improvements is $11 million. Next slide. All right, before we talk about proposed improvements, I want to provide a quick background on how water gets to Oklahoma City. Here is a map showing the portion of the state all the way from the northwest to southeast Oklahoma, and you can see Oklahoma City in the center. From the northwest, Oklahoma City is served by the North Canadian River System. The system includes the river and three reservoirs, Canton, Hefner and Overholzer. This is approximately one-third of our water supply. From southeast Oklahoma, water is pumped to the Draper Reservoir from two reservoirs, Etoka and McGee. Currently, there is a 60-inch water line that goes 100 miles from the Etoka Reservoir to Draper Reservoir. And then there is a 13-mile section from McGee Creek to Etoka. And all this water is about two-thirds of our water supply for Oklahoma City. This capital plan includes, oh, we'll go back one more time. Back one more. There you go. On there is show the new 72-inch pipeline. We are actually constructing a Second Etoka Pipeline, which is part of this capital plan. It goes another 100 miles of 72-inch water line. This pipe is needed to allow us to pump all our existing water rights from McGee, Etoka and the future Lake Sardis. And this water allocation will allow us to meet projected 2060 water demands and this project is scheduled to be completed in 2025. Okay, next slide. The Hefner Draper Interconnect Project will improve our system resiliency by enabling service to the entire city from either water treatment plant and invent we ever had, have an outage at either plant. An example of water system reliability is our asset management program. A recent project that highlights the importance of this is the 72-inch water line from Draper. We initially had a, in the capital plan to replace the entire water line for $40 million. However, an evaluation of the pipeline determined that only 30 joints out of the over 2,600 joints needed to be replaced at only $2 million. So we were able to reallocate those funds to other projects. At the Draper Water Treatment Plant, the major projects we are doing is to improve our finished water storage. The existing finished water clearwells are past their useful life, so we're constructing, constructing 10 million gallons of new storage. At Hefner Water Treatment Plant, there are a variety of upgrades to replace various treatment processes that have also exceeded their useful life. And currently, there are about 1,200 miles of water mains within our system, over 50 years old. So we are systematically replacing about eight miles per year. However, after the Second Etoka Pipeline is completed, we're going to increase replacement funding to accelerate that program. Next slide. So on to the wastewater system. One more time. The wastewater capital program is $531 million and the majority of this work is for reliability and resiliency at over, just over $349 million. Regulatory work is $133 million and the general work is about $49 million. Erica. A major component of the CIP is our asset management program. The program is designed to evaluate the remaining useful life of our assets to efficiently manage desired level of service. So we're doing a condition assessment where we'll go out and inspect 100% of our system and we're doing this over an eight-year period and then ongoing into the future. This will provide us with actual information for our system so we can make sure we are properly prioritizing our capital replacement program to address the worst situations first. And as we are discovering, we are repairing defects and, and potential blockages as we identify these places. The water, the wastewater treatment plants contain structures and systems that were part of the original construction about 40 years ago. And as such, we're doing projects to improve the reliability and allow for proper operation and maintenance. And for the main replacements, we're replacing 16 miles of aged and deteriorated infrastructure internally. We have over 3,000 miles of sanitary sewer. Next slide. For regulatory compliance, the main component is the South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant. The South Canadian Plant Expansion is planned within this CIP and the plant is currently near its design capacity. Also, the new discharge permit is requiring increased levels of treatment. The estimated cost for this project is $110 million. And this project is currently under design. Construction will begin in 2021 and then the project is expected to be complete in 2024. Next slide. So on to our solid waste program. This program is just over $21 million for the next five years. This program includes customer carts and trucks for the solid waste management collection. As you can see, it's fiscal year 2022, it's a little bit elevated. Usually all five years are pretty level across the top, but the capital funds for the solid waste equipment were deferred to fiscal year 2022 for the anticipated revenue reduction related to COVID. And next slide. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Crystal, thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time to walk through that with us. And at this point, we've got about 10 minutes for Commissioner questions. So I want to thank everybody, Mr. Winger, Mr. Cupper, Mr. Cranenberg and Crystal, thank you as well. Just thanks for everybody for your time. Commissioners, anybody have questions they want to lead off our discussion with for any of these department folks?
I do. I have a question. You know, when we see the slides, the graphs that show funding sources, it tends to leave the impression that there's just this big pot of money that gets allocated according to need. But I think I know that there is some restraint that is attached to the funding sources. And I wonder, any one of you, I would guess Eric or Mark might be most specifically inclined, and Doug Cupper, maybe you as well. How does the source of funding impact the expenditure of those funds for you and the decisions that you have to make about how to expend those funds?
This is Eric Quinger. So I mean, I think I'll speak first. You know, the slide that I showed, I mean, there's multiple funding sources that public works with, whether it be the GeoBond, whether it be the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax. We do have other funding sources, but in most cases, I mean, they're earmarked to specific projects. So the bond program has listed projects. They were approved by the voters of Oklahoma City. So we're really restricted to making sure that we complete those projects. But the Better Street Safer City Tax, I think as many of you may know, there's an advisory board, and that advisory board, who has been meeting for more than two years, has assisted in identifying projects, recommending those to the city council, and then with the city council's approval, allowing staff to proceed then with actual locations. So each is a little bit different. Some are more flexible than others. But in the end, it's either the citizens or the residents of Oklahoma City, the voters of Oklahoma City, or our city council that help define where we actually work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powers, any other questions?
I would like to hear from Mark Krannenberg about that as well, if he's still with us.
Mr. Krannenberg, are you still with us?
If Mark's not there, this is Doug Dowler. I'm the Budget Director for the city, and I apologize for some of the background noise here. But most of the funds that we have here do have restrictions on them. For example, at airports, they must use their revenues for airports-related projects. Likewise, utilities, the ratepayer revenues must be used for utility projects. Parks is in the same situation as Mr. Winger mentioned. Bond projects are approved by the voters and must be used for those specific projects. We have very few sources that are just generally available for capital projects. The general fund would be primarily the source for that. We fund about $5 million a year in projects out of that, but most of that is fleet replacement for our city vehicles, and then maintenance on our buildings. So very little of that is for new projects. So I don't know if that helps answer your question there. We really have very little money that has that flexibility to be used as we, you know, might want to do for other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Powers, any other questions on anything for you?
Oh, I have lots and lots of questions. I think it probably, first of all, other commissioners may have questions as well. But also, I think most of the questions I have probably be better answered just by individual contact with department heads.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I mean, just given our time constraint here, and for those of you who are joining us for the school's discussion, I've seen a couple people have joined the meeting. You're not in the wrong room. We'll start that conversation here in just a couple of minutes. So we appreciate your patience as we finish talking about capital improvement plans. Try not to fall asleep in the interim. But what I would just say is, Commissioners, if you have questions, the thing to do would probably be to email, and I'm sure staff can provide direct contacts if you do have questions for these other department folks that you'd like to have addressed before this comes before us. Sarah Welch, correct me if I'm wrong, this will come before Planning Commission at the December meeting. Is that correct? Or is that coming today?
It's on for today. So if you have any questions that impact your ability, I suppose, to vote today, we probably should hear from those now. And I'm happy to be the person that you send your questions to, to communicate to departments.
That's great. So with this final five minutes, does anybody have any questions that they believe are really pressing for decision on today's agenda? Hearing no discussion from the other Planning Commissioners, I'll take that as a no. I would just say, and I'll email a couple folks just random questions. Doug Cupper, your bike trails. I ride a 30-mile circle every Sunday that I love, and so I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing there. It's a fantastic trail system. I'm glad to see it continuing. And it's a shame Mark is not here, not still with us, but I would pass along to him just from my perspective. I love everything about the airport, except that as a child of the 80s and 90s, we've done away with Aerospace America. That would be my only airport complaint. But with that, I appreciate everybody being here, all the staff, department heads. Thank you so much for making yourselves available. And again, Planning Commissioners, if you have any questions, you can email those directly, and hopefully we can get some answers. But thank you very much. We have a couple of minutes before the school's discussion starts. I'll give everybody just a couple of minutes. If you need a break, use the restroom, grab something to drink, and we'll begin that school's discussion promptly at 11 o'clock. Good morning. If you're joining us for the school's discussion, the special study session of the Planning Commission is on a short break. We just finished another meeting discussion, and we will begin our discussion as it relates to this agenda item on student enrollment growth and capacity issues promptly at 11 a.m., so in just a couple of minutes. So thanks for your patience. We'll get started soon. Good morning, everyone. It is 11 o'clock. I'm just waiting on a majority of the Planning Commission members to return from a short break from our previous hour of discussion. And as soon as we have a quorum here, we'll get started. I do see Commissioners Hinkle, Highsmith, and Claire. I'm just missing one. And we will get started as soon as we have a quorum. So just be patient with us, and we'll start here shortly.
I'm here.
Commissioner, okay, so we've got five. With that, we will go ahead and get started. Given that we had a formal break, I'll just do a roll call for verification of quorum purposes on the people that I see. Commissioner Claire?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Commissioner Powers?
Here.
Commissioner Highsmith?
Here.
Commissioner Pennington?
Here.
And Commissioner Privet, you're back.
Present.
There you are. Okay, we have everybody. So good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. The Planning Commission is engaging in a number of discussions. So if you logged in a little before 11, you heard us talking about capital improvement plans. The next item on today's agenda is a discussion regarding student enrollment growth and capacity issues. I want to lead off this discussion by just thanking everybody for attending. I hate that we're having to have the meeting this way, but I'm sure that it makes it easier on a lot of you to attend, so maybe blessings come in disguise. This meeting is being held by video conference because of COVID-19. If for some reason during the course of our discussion, the meeting is dropped due to technology issues, we do not have another time to reschedule it because we run out of the ability to have these meetings in exactly three days, as I'm sure most of you guys know, guys and girls know. So it would be in person and a date to be determined. What I'll say just to lead off this conversation is, as far as we are concerned, there is no real agenda here. The agenda is simply this. Last fall, there was a very lively discussion relating to what was Mustang Schools, and it related to a turnpike extension that was creating a lot of demand, obviously, for new residential development. There was frankly a good discussion about it at the meeting. There was actually some follow-up discussion on it within the media. And since that time, it's been an issue that has come back to us on multiple occasions. The challenge for us as Planning Commissioners, as we work to advance the development of the city, is that there is not a mechanism that we have at our disposal that is easy to make tangible for how we can consider school capacity issues in our decision-making. That said, a separation of political subdivision should not prevent us from having a conversation. And I'm hopeful that that's exactly what this is, is a conversation that starts that we can use to continue those discussions to our city council and with you all and your respective school boards and district representatives so we can find a way to work together. And I have, you know, some thoughts and ideas that I've shared about this with city staff and that Commissioners have talked about. But this is just an issue we're going to continue to face. There was a recent issue in Deer Creek Schools involving a development density concern, and so that just brought it right back to the forefront. So with that, I'll just say this to get the discussion started, and we'll start it at the Planning Commission level, and then just let the district representatives chime in where appropriate. I am of the opinion that the best tools that we have to communicate with school districts would be the creation of information. Zoning notices are sent to school districts. The one thing that shows up in our packet, you all receive them, or some representative within your district receives them, notices of rezoning application. Most of the time, and I will go so far as to say almost universally, we never receive specific comments from the districts. But one of the things that I think we probably could do is formulate some sort of an annual meeting like this that would allow us to provide school district leaders and decision-makers with information like, what are the updates to the zoning map? That information is readily available to anybody in the public that wants to see it today at OKC.gov. But one of the things that might not be as easily ascertainable is what parts of that have been preliminarily plotted? Where have requests been coming from? What preliminary plaits are moving into final plaits? How many lots are being built propositely in these final plaits or likely to be built in these final plaits on an annual basis? What development extensions or infrastructure changes are going to create an impact on development desire, desirability, like turnpike extensions? These are things that we can have some kind of dialogue about that may better equip all of us to deal with these challenges. I don't have answers. I just have ideas. And I really want to get some feedback from you all about how we as a Planning Commission can, and as a city, can better help you within our limits to manage this type of growth and change without frankly prohibiting development, which for a lot of Planning Commissioners, myself included, is really a non-starter. So with that, I don't know if other Planning Commissioners have thoughts they want to add to that, but I'd certainly welcome those this time. Commissioner Pennington, you look, you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm hoping that for the purposes of this discussion, because, and I appreciate you contextualizing it, Mr. Chairman, but from Jeff or legal, can we hear what we as the commission have the authority, the legal authority, to base our, to consider this issue at all? Could you explain our ability to do that? And the staff's capacity to make assessments about school capacity? I guess I'm just not clear to the chairman's point about this idea of whether or not school capacity can change our ability to make a vote on development. I'd like to know our authority, our ability to make decisions in that way. Because I would hate for our friends here from the different school districts to have a false sense of our control over the outcomes here. And so I think they should know what the parameters are that we are allowed to make decisions about this issue.
Good question. This is Jeff Butler, Planning Director. I'll start out, and maybe Susan can add on to that. State law does allow the Planning Commission to consider school capacity issues. It makes that pretty clear. And, but historically, in our comprehensive plan, that hasn't been kind of one of the, one of the major considerations that we use when we consider a plat or a rezone. And, you know, to add to Scott's comments, that was, you know, one of the things that we proposed that we've kind of brought forward to the Planning Commission is should we do that? The state law allows us to consider that. Is that something that we would want to consider in addition to, you know, water and sewer services and emergency services availability and transportation and those kinds of things that are typically under the purview of a city? Because, you know, as Commissioner Cravens mentioned, it's, you know, it's, there are some difficulties. You know, we can consider school capacity, but there's not a whole lot we can do about it. Or at least I should say, what we can do about it is kind of indirect. And so with that, Susan, do you have anything to add to that in terms of what we can and can't do?
This is Susan Randall, City Attorney's Office. You are correct. I mean, I think the statute does allow us to consider school capacity as one of the objectives of zoning. I think the issue would be that we need to have substantial evidence probably in the record as to, you know, how that school district is being impacted, numbers, how many other apartments around. All those type of issues would have to come into. It's pretty much fact-specific to a particular zoning, I guess, case or issue. So I guess that that would be what we would be challenged with, was just to make sure that there is enough evidence in the record to consider that as a reason for denial of his particular zoning application.
That is why I mentioned in my introductory comments that the vast majority of our staff reports do not contain any comments from school districts. So we don't have that evidence before us when we go to make these decisions. And in the case that happened recently, which I'll just pick on because it's a Ward 8 issue, the case went all the way through planning commission. It was negotiated with the applicant. Actually reductions were made to density at my insistence because of road capacity concerns that I had for Council Road and the way that it interacts with the turnpike. And, but there was no discussion of it until it had passed on beyond our purview to city council. And then, then there was a much larger discussion that took place. We simply didn't know that school capacity was a problem. I would also just add to that discussion, and other commissioners can chime in on their thoughts here. School capacity in and of itself would not be determinative for us. Not for me. There are other things that would have to be present for us to, in good faith, sort of deny a zoning application or discuss, you know, reductions in the size, the density of that development, just based on that alone. So I would add those comments to Mr. Butler and Ms. Randall's comments. Commissioners have other thoughts on this that they want to share before we turn it over to our district colleagues? Commissioner Highsmith, you're pointing.
Yeah, I don't want to derail the conversation here. I guess, you know, for me, maybe I have a unique perspective because, you know, my ward is mainly urban. I know that, you know, the genesis of this discussion seemed to be more about overcrowding in schools. And so I'm just going to say this once, and then, you know, if it's relevant later on in the conversation, maybe you guys can come back to me. But at least from my view in Ward 6, you know, we, we got hit pretty hard by the pathways to greatness. School closings. And our problem is a lack of attendance, right? And so, you know, frankly, it is something that I consider when thinking about neighborhoods in my core. I know we don't get those statistics, as you point out, but it's obvious from the closings. And so, you know, I just, I kind of come from it from the other side. I would love to see us be able to use that to help us, you know, add the density in these neighborhoods that we need to keep our local schools up and running, which I think most people, at least in my ward, understand is a very strong community positive. So that's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Highsmith. Commissioner Powers, you look like you were going to interject a point. You have something you'd like to say as well?
I was, something, something you said, you were talking about this in terms of, you know, basis for denial of specific applications. I think maybe we need to sort of open that up a little bit and think about it more in terms of managing growth as opposed to denying specific applications. You know, one of the, one of the questions that keeps coming back to us again and again has to do with increasing density in ways that really are not contemplated by our current plan. Half acre developments and that sort of thing. And when we're looking at that in terms of policy, you know, is this a good idea or not a good idea? It's not something that's really contemplated by our current system, but we keep doing it. And in doing that, we are in fact adding to the density of these almost entirely outlying areas. That is, of course, adding to density in those schools. So it's not just, I think, a question of, oh, let's look at this one particular application, approve or deny. I think we need to broaden our horizon a little bit as we're thinking about this and what we might be able to do to contribute to solution.
No, I, yeah, I agree with that. I think that's fair. I just, I made that comment stark in the sense that it's, most of the time, it's going to be, don't build that here. Right? Not, hey, this is fine, but if you take it from 200 to 100, we'd be okay. We don't get those types of comments. We get, we can't handle this apartment. We can't handle 300 lots. That, that doesn't tell us anything, doesn't tell us what to do. We just have to vote on the case before us, so.
I agree. And that's one reason why something like this is valuable. It gives us a little bit more ability to step back from a particular case and think about it in terms of trends and policies and what we might be able to do to contribute to a better outcome.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Hinkle.
I'd be real curious to know who's participating with us today and what schools they're from.
Yeah, and I'm getting ready to turn over those folks. We have a number of people that had RSVP'd to attend. And as they speak, we, they can certainly introduce themselves, but we have quite a few district representatives with us today. Commissioner Hinkle?
This is Commissioner Coffey, and I too am anxious to know what schools are represented. As in District 3, as you know, we back up to the Mustang school system and to the Yukon system to a lesser extent. And with the population growth that we're seeing in District 3, I hear many, many comments from the parents who are concerned about the overwhelming effects our growth is having on the Mustang school system. So I hear many, many comments about that from the parents, but very few from the administrators. So I'm particularly interested in, I'm particularly interested in knowing how the administrators are dealing with this great influx of students as, as our population is growing, particularly in the, at the elementary levels. So I'm interested in knowing if the Mustang school system and the Yukon school system is representing, and how the administration plans for this really unknown influx of students until the very last minute in some cases.
Yeah, that's great. Both of the districts you just named had RSVP'd, and I believe are with us. Any other commissioner introductory comments? So hearing none, I'm glad we got through that in about 15 minutes. I really want to turn the rest of this discussion over to our district representatives and give you all a chance to be heard and speak to us about your concerns. These virtual meetings do not lend themselves to an easy and obvious way in which to do that. So what I will do is just use the RSVP sheet that I've got. I'll go straight down the list to the folks that RSVP'd, ask them if they are with us and if they have any comments or feedback they'd like to provide with the commission. And these are just, sorry, Yukon, these are in alphabetical order. So the first one would be David Reed or Anita Johnson with Choctaw, Nakoma Park. Somebody, one of you all with us today? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll go to Crutcho. District Superintendent did RSVP, James Branscombe. Okay, Deer Creek, I know Renette Tippins is with us. Ms. Tippins, do you have something you'd like to say or share with the commission?
Okay, we actually met on some things recently this fall. And again, density is a serious issue for us. We are the lowest general funded school district in the state of Oklahoma, but we also have the complex problem of not having business and industry. And that makes us pretty unique in the group of schools that you will be working with. I see some of my peers who have some similar issues. But we are also known as the fastest-growing school district in the state of Oklahoma. So when you come in with high-density areas, whether it doesn't really matter which kind, for us to run a bond issue to do a building, we just constructed a building to serve 1,600 students. I have before me right at the moment, and I had some that were in the Oklahoma City area that we talked about. But we have 2.4 students per door that come to our district. That's, that's from census data and what is on our school report card. So I just take the numbered lots. And if the lots, like the current one on a quarter section are 684 doors, and you take it times 2.4 or 2.6, depending on which one you're looking at, I need to build another school of over 1,600 students, a little bit larger than the one I just built. For Deer Creek, we have to do a series bond. And it takes us 10 years, our patrons 10 years, to pay off that school. The current school that we built has another six years to pay out. So we would have to take our series bonds and extend them. Well, currently, in the things that were just recently passed by the city, they will bring us somewhere around that 1,600 students. I now have another one that I'm looking at, and it doesn't count the things that are being done at 192nd and May because those were actually PUDs that were approved some time ago. And we have both apartments and some high-density housing in that area. But we have the need to build two more schools, just like what we just finished. Each of those would take a 10-year payout based on current ad valorem. And unfortunately, high-density just does not bring, one, housing is the lowest rate of ad valorem, and it does not bring the dollars to the school district to do that. So we have a real concern about the timeline. If it's a slow timeline that can be paced, and we have a really big concern about the density, again, 2.4 students per household door or apartment door. So for us, it's just the fact, we truly cannot bond and build. You can't go out beyond 10 years. Your finance institutions are not going to support that. And so we are maxed out. We are looking at proposing for this next big piece that's already in our district. But we have several others that are coming to us right now, wanting to do the very same thing. I've got one at 206 and MacArthur, which is actually county. So I have to do both county and, and your Oklahoma City pieces. But it's 684 houses. It's over 1,600 students that want to come in on top of the 1,600 or so that we know we just approved. And that's on top of what's been prior approved. And especially in the southwest quadrant and in our north central, on the eastern side. The, all of those are very high-density, high-growth and already approved PUDs for us. And so we have a lot of concerns about being able to keep up with it and to put a desk, a chair and square footage under every child.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Tippins. Real quickly, your calculation of 2.0, you said 2.48?
2.4 students anywhere, it depends on which thing you look. But if you look at our school report card, and a lot of it's from census data, they tell us that every door brings us 2.4 students. So when I'm calculating the doors, when I look at 684 homes, I take that times 2.84 students that they will bring to us. And we don't have business and industry to counter that, to soften that. There are some of the communities that have a lot of business and industry. We don't have that in Deer Creek. We just have.
And when you, and just for everybody's benefit, when you say business and industry, what you're talking about is commercial ad valorem.
We don't have commercial ad valorem in Deer Creek. If you look at our, our revenue, we have almost none. In fact, Vernon Florence, that does a lot of studies, he uses this as an example because we just don't have it.
Sure. Okay. Well, we appreciate that. The next person that I have signed up who had RSVP'd for the meeting today is Edmund Brighttown. And I would just ask the respective members, just because we want to be sure at least everybody gets an opportunity to share with us your initial thoughts, just keep your initial comments to three minutes if you can. And then we are certainly going to try and circle back for some discussion. So Mr. Town, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Even though we're listed as Edmund, a third of our kids live in Oklahoma City. Of course, that's the west and southwest corner of our school district. That is, it's about 25% of the property in our school district. Our issue has been the, we had 4,000 apartment units basically built over a very short time period that ran from about Western to over to Meridian, from about splitting 122nd and Memorial North. And we can account for those for a period of time. But if you're familiar with the life cycle of an apartment complex, they may be singles, they may be starters, but in five, 10, 15 years, they become family homes. So we have to account not only for what we have right now, but what that will evolve to in the future. We currently have a new elementary going in, Scissor Tail, which is just to the north of Quail Springs Mall in basically a business area. It attaches to Eppworth Village. We've got, and we think it will help serve this area. Our growth in Oklahoma City is going to slow down. I believe we only have three or four square miles left that can be developed in that area for residential. And I do want to appreciate the group sort of putting a hold on some of these apartments and the density several years ago when you realized that people were, this was pulling people from the core of Oklahoma City. They were moving this area, and it was becoming a super-dense area for population. So we, like Deer Creek, have to, we're in the bottom 25 of all funded school districts in the state. We do have a high ad valorem. We can bond, we can do it. But we also are experiencing growth on the other side in the Edmund portion. We have our first school east of I-35 going in. And we have fully, I have 50% of this school district doesn't have a house on it yet. So we're going to have to deal with growth on both sides, but we actually see our Oklahoma City growth slowing down.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town. I appreciate that. The area of Oklahoma City where you guys are building a new elementary school, which is in Ward 8, which is Penn and call it, is that 150th, just south of 150th? Yeah. And there's a lot of apartment complexes in that area that will feed into that school as well. Out of curiosity, because it's a good data point for the commission, what would, what do you think the capacity of that school will be when it's open?
It'll be 900 to 1,000 when it's completely done. We'll build it in phases. We don't want to build a school for 1,000 and start it with 400. So we'll build it in phases over time. But it will take care of initially overcrowding at Angie DeBeau Elementary, which is a mile and a half away. It was 1,100 kids before this year.
Okay. But when that, when that elementary school opens, and forgive me for not knowing the name, but when that elementary school that I referenced opens, what capacity will it open at?
We'll only open it at about 450. And then we'll, then we'll build, the core will be built in the middle. We'll have one set of, one wing done. And then we'll add wings that add 150 students per wing as we go on.
Got it. Thank you. The next district I have signed up is Hera, Paul Blessington. And folks, forgive me if I happen to mispronounce your name, it is certainly not intentional. But Mr. Blessington, are you with us today?
I am. I am. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, Hera is kind of a unique situation. We recently finished a turnpike condition that runs right through Hera. The projection on that has been quite large as far as developments go. You know, with COVID and everything else, and I know I'm probably speaking for a lot of other superintendents, enrollment's kind of been a real crazy year for that. Our numbers, quite honestly, are down from what they've been in the past. We've kind of seen a significant increase in probably the last three years. But again, this year's been quite different from the lack of enrollment. But again, a lot of projected growth. I would probably guess to say from our, from our numbers, it's going to be, you know, four, five, six years away. But it is something that we're, we are planning on, probably about seven years away from having another large bond issue for potential growth. But that's where we're at right now, is just kind of the wait and see.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here and joining our discussion today. Little Axe, Jay Thomas. Mr. Thomas, I see you. Would you like to add any comments for us today?
Took me a minute to get unmuted there. I appreciate you all doing this also. We're kind of in the same boat as Hera. We're, we have been growing really fast. And kind of the same thing, we've got series bonds passed because we have very little business in the industry as well. And so we're about seven years out on being able to add on. We're going to add on another building. Right now, we're pretty well-packed, except for this year, and our numbers are down a little bit this year. But so we're, we're kind of racing the bond part of things and trying to stuff kids in as much as we can. And then we just kind of keep going. But, but again, we're, we've got plans and everything for the next building of about, I think it's 650. um, but again, we're, we've got plans and everything for the next building of about, I think it's six hundred and fifty kids. But until we can, we can get to the next stage, we can't build it. So that's kind of where we're at too.
Got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Uh, the next person I have that RSVP'd was, uh, Rick Cobb, which is with Middel. Uh, Mr. Cobb, are you with us? Okay, uh, Mi- uh, Moore would be the next one. Uh, Dr. Robert Romines, are you with us?
I am. How are you guys doing?
We're doing great. As good as one can do in a virtual meeting.
Yeah, well, and I, I agree with the, uh, some of the others that have mentioned. I appreciate the, the, the Zoom and the call and, uh, getting opinions, uh, from us. Uh, hearing more, uh, obviously you all know that we serve, uh, most of our square foot, or excuse me, our square miles come from southwest Oklahoma City. Uh, more, uh, the more residences around eighteen square miles and, uh, we have about a hundred and fifty square miles of southwest Oklahoma City. Uh, we, back in two thousand and fifteen, passed a bond issue. It was our storm shelter initiative and as a result, uh, and those projects are all complete. We have an additional a hundred and twenty-five classrooms. Uh, we're preparing for a future bond issue that will, uh, add additional classrooms and potentially another elementary school. Uh, my only ask, we have the room, uh, uh, to make changes and, and, and move around. Uh, the only thing that I would ask is that we have conversation on what that looks like, uh, in the, in the areas that you all are looking at for homes, uh, apartments a- and that type of thing. The only concern that we would have and, and the city council that we work with, uh, that are in our, in our, our, uh, attendance area is really more, more or less a traffic flow, uh, and that type of thing around our site. So, uh, we're positioned, uh, and good to go in regards to accepting, uh, more students. We just would like some lead time so that we could look at the potential of redistricting or, uh, putting, uh, additional square footage or classrooms, uh, on a future bond issue. Most of our sites have room for growth where we can act, actually, it's kind of like, uh, Brett Towne was saying. We can add on to our structures. We just need to have enough lead time so that we can, uh, put the money together, whether it be through building funds or, uh, bond funds, but, uh, that's where we're at more.
Thank you. Dr. Romines, I appreciate you being here. You said something that just leads me to want to make a comment for the benefit of the group. Um, understand, folks, that as the planning commission, we don't decide when and what comes before us. We are reacting to what is brought to us the same way that you all are. And we never know, uh, when we zone, when someone comes before us and they, and they want to zone something residential, they may not necessarily tell us that they intend to come back later, uh, and build five hundred homes. Um, you know, we don't necessarily know exactly how something's going to go. In fact, you know, again, just from my own ward in Ward Eight, we have a development coming before us today. Uh, and I believe, uh, Ms. Tippens, this would be in Deer Creek, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but it started out as a giant commercial development and little by little, it's come back to us as a residential development. And it, it gets really tough for us to, um, you know, it's to evaluate when we don't get that information from districts in our staff reports. We have no idea that it's a concern. And so for the folks, uh, not, not to, to pick on you guys, but, uh, Mr. Thomas there in, in, in Little Axe and, and our folks in here and others, these districts that are experiencing new growth. Um, those, those staff report notices, those zoning notices are, are, are sent for a reason and we really hope uh, that you will actively engage with us in reviewing those and communicating back to staff. And I know that's tough at, at your respective levels. You know, to do that, but if there's someone within your district who could essentially be appointed, uh, with reviewing and, and sort of communicating, uh, with us, that would be really helpful. Um, and it, and it would help guide decisions to Commissioner Powers' comment. It's not always a yes or no conversation, but it does help us have conversations with applicants about density that we don't know we need to have, Dr. Romines, at the outset, because we didn't know they were going to bring an apartment complex to us this meeting. Um, and, and right, wrong or indifferent, all of the planning commissioners who, just so you know, are entirely volunteer based. Uh, nobody's getting paid to be here today. Um, we get our packets for review the Friday before the meeting. So, we, we don't necessarily know, uh, what issues are there until we get through the packet. And for a lot of us who work and have families and all kinds of things, that may very well be the night before the meeting. Um, so it's not a perfect system, but it's a, it's a system that certainly thrives when communication, uh, is, is at its most thorough. So, um, Mustang is the next one on the list. Uh, Charles Bradley, Jason Pittinger, I believe one of you all is with us, if not both.
Yes, uh, this is Charles Bradley from Mustang Superintendent. And again, thank, uh, thank you for, uh, giving us this opportunity. Uh, one thing that I would like to point out there is that we receive these, uh, the, the, the notices uh, for the longest time, and I really didn't even know that, uh, we had the ability to go and meet with somebody until about a year and a half ago. Uh, we just thought it was all reactionary, like, you know, what can we do about this? It's coming. It's, uh, you know, what do we do? So you had mentioned earlier, um, Mr. Cravens, that on the website that is all of the notices that are sent to us, is there a interactive map that shows where all of these are? Cause we're having to
So, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So what's available on the website, which I, if you guys have not ever visited this or seen it, I would encourage you to go look at it. I use it privately every day. I used it this morning, which is OKC.gov has a zoning map. And that zoning map can show you what as of today in your school district is zoned and for what. So you can see what looks like a field with cut hay is actually zoned for homes. And it, it's just a matter of where it is in that process, uh, from the zoning piece. And if we want to get real technical about it, it would be from the comp plan designation to the zoning, which would be the first notice you would get to the preliminary plat, to the final plat. And one of the things that's very confusing for the public is they'll come in and they'll say, well, you can't build six hundred homes here. And I'll say, well, no problem. It's going to take ten years for them to build that many. Um, but the, the reality is once that final plat is finished, it's out of our hands. At that point, it's a matter of them pulling a permit for lot twenty-seven, block two in the Mustang, you know, Trail subdivision, right? So we, we don't, at that point, it's outside of our hands, but that zoning map is a great start. And I hope as we engage in this conversation and go through this one district at a time, at the end, I'd really love to hear, uh, from folks. If you think that these tools or these communication mechanisms that we're proposing, maybe an annual meeting just that updates the districts, where are all the preliminary plats, uh, in, in your district right now that are zoned preliminarily? I'm sorry, that are platted preliminarily. Where are the final plats? Because that would give you guys, I think, better ability to see what's coming at you as you look forward. Um, and you would also, for the zoning map, uh, Mr. Bradley, be able to see things that are, for example, R four. It'll take a little bit, and we get this complaint all the time on the notices from the public and we understand that. We provide state statutory, public noticing requirements. But we get complaints all the time. People say, I didn't know what R four was. I didn't know it wasn't a part. Well, you've got, that's that engagement piece. Somebody's got to engage on your side uh, to, to help gather that information and report, uh, concerns with that back to us. But, uh, that OKC.gov site is a great place to go. And then additionally on the zoning things, uh, she's probably going to get mad at me for doing this, but, um, you can always reach out to city staff. If you get a notice and you're not sure exactly what to do, uh, you can call city staff. Um, our, uh, clerk person is Cindy Lakin. And I'll give you her phone number now and I'll give it again. It's four zero five two nine seven two two eight nine. Again, that's four zero five, two nine seven, two two eight nine. She can always tell you if we have a, if, if you get a notice and you're not quite sure what to do with it, she can get the right staff person for, for, to answer your questions. Okay. Um, and, and, and the other thing on those notices, just, just to be clear is when, you know, when you get those, the planning commission, you can engage with your district's planning commissioner, which in your case, Mr. Bradley would be Mary Coffey, on any zoning matter. If it relates to a plat, that's actually not something she can engage with you on directly. But you can certainly submit comments that would be reviewed at the public meeting as a part of our discourse like we're having right now.
Okay. I appreciate
Is that helpful to you?
Yes, it is. And just, uh, to that point, uh, Mrs. Coffey had mentioned that earlier. Um, growth is, I mean, if you look on the map, a lot of the Mustang School District is within the Oklahoma City School District or Oklahoma City, uh, limits. And so growth is always an issue. Uh, prior to this year, someone said it earlier, where it works, we, this is the first year we will have less students than we did the prior year, and it's down about three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five because of the pandemic. But typically over the last ten years, we have averaged about a thousand student, new students every two, two and a half years. So that, that's tremendous growth that we're seeing. And you know, and I think personally, I think growth is good. I would rather have that as an issue than the other as being an issue. And so we know when you look at Google Earth and you look at the Mustang School District, there's a lot of green down there. There's a lot of opportunity for development. So I would say that, uh, you know, learning on what you have to do as a commission, um, is there any, um, long-term uh, plan, any, you know, trails, parks, anything like that, uh, that, uh, that that's going to attract a lot more residentials in here. And Renette has the same, uh, issue as we do is that we are a bedroom community. The majority of what we have in Oklahoma City area is, uh, the, uh, the houses. And that's where our revenue is generated from, from ad valorem. So just knowing what your vision is, what the vision for West Oklahoma City would be helpful as we develop our long-range plan.
Sure. Well, the, the first where our morning started, uh, Mr. Bradley, was with, uh, respective department heads from the city going over uh, the capital, uh, improvement plan for the next five years. Um, and those projects are slated. That is, I believe, a publicly available document or portions of it will be publicly available. So you can see where the Parks Department, uh, purports to spend its funds, its capital dollars in the next five years, where Public Works intends to ride, uh, widen roads. Um, infrastructure always leads development and, and there's a great, um, a, a great sort of fundamental real estate book. It's, it's schools and roads. Uh, your districts are attractive because you guys do a great job. Um, and once the roads are put in, people can come to and from. And so turnpikes, four-lane streets, all that is going to contribute to, to, to pressure for sure. Um, city staff has prodded me to provide you with another number, uh, which, you know, leave it to me to be wrong, but that number I gave you is good. Another number you should write down. It's a general number is two nine seven, two six, two three. Ms. Lakin is unavailable. That would be a number you could use to get information from another party. Just, we want to make sure you get it timely. So two nine seven, two six, two three. Mr. Bradley, thank you for being with us. I hope you'll hang around, uh, for our discussion here at the end. Uh, Norman is the next one who signed up. Um, this will be the first one where I take a name pass. Dr. Nick, forgive me. And, uh, Justin Milner had, had RSVP'd there. One of you folks with us today? Mr. Milner, your audio, something is wrong with your audio.
Kind of sounds like a chipmunk.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Milner, we cannot, unfortunately, you're, we can't capture your audio at all. Um, it's not coming through. I'm going to give you a minute. I'm going to come back. Um, I'm going to come back to you if you want to work on it. Um, and I'll go to, uh, Oakdale is next. Dr. Joe Pierce. Uh, Dr. Pierce, I think I saw you earlier on my screen somewhere. Are you still with us?
Yes, right here.
There you are, sir. What would you like to add to the comments that have been made so far in our discussion?
Not a lot to add. Um, Oakdale has kind of had a history of growth. We are not seeing a huge amount of that. We do have a couple of areas that we got the, uh, the zoning information out. So we have an eye on that. We, um, the, that information is very valuable to us as we, like the other superintendents have said, as we begin planning future bond issues. We're currently looking at a, a bond election this spring, uh, for some immediate needs, but then we'll be doing some master planning for the next year or two after that. So this is very timely and, um, as we look forward to those things as well. But I don't have a lot of other things to add. I'm really just listening. Um, I do agree with you, Scott, that I think some of these, uh, maybe an annual meeting, figuring out the process. I'll echo what Charles said a little bit ago. Um, we get these notifications, but I'm not really sure exactly sometimes what I'm supposed to do or what would even be appropriate to do. Um, we appreciate them, but, um, I guess to dig deeper is like, how would we best respond? How's, what's the best way to communicate those things?
Yeah. Uh, again, I'm not purporting to have answers because I'm not smart enough to, to, to provide them or create them. But what I would just say is that the idea is that those notices, if, if somebody from your, your respective district, and I know your resources are, are as limited and treasured as the, the ones that on the city side of things too, but if somebody there was kind of the point person for being knowledgeable, my vision for at least starting a conversation about a solution would be having that annual meeting. That representative is there. They see what's been zoned and platted over the course of the last year. Um, they, they have a map and then as new zoning notices are coming forward over the rest of that year, they're simply taking that zoning notice and seeing what that change is, uh, on the map they were provided. And so that each, at each year, when we have that sort of annual meeting like this and a discussion, there is a, a baseline, uh, for you guys to continue to build on that you can use. And we, having just gone through the capital investment or capital improvement plan, we totally empathize, uh, as the city of how difficult it is to plan from a capital perspective for your, your districts and bonding capacity issues like Ms. Tippens brought up. We, we are not, we are super empathetic to those things. The city has the same problem. Uh, it takes, they were, the city departments, for example, were telling us today, they're still trying to spend and complete projects from the two thousand and seven general obligation bond issue. And, and so it just takes a long time to move those things through, which is just why consistent communication in some, you know, sort of higher, higher form is, I think, really important for us to establish as respective political subdivisions, school districts and municipalities. So, um, Oklahoma City, Dr. Sean McDaniel and Scott Randall did sign up as, or somebody from the district with us today wants to add anything here. Okay, hearing none. Uh, Dr. James White or, oh.
This is Nick Millarino with Norman. Do you mind if we jump back real quick? Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you perfectly now. Go ahead, Mr. Milner.
Well, no, this is actually Nick Millarino. I'm the superintendent. Mr. Milner is sitting over here to my right out of the screen.
Oh, got it.
I appreciate the introduction. I've got a few texts from some of my colleagues on here. Now I've got the nickname Mickey Mouse or Chipmunk. So, uh, anyway, it does help to have the correct, uh, microphone, uh, selected, but I appreciate the invite. Uh, many of you know, we're, we're in Norman, so we're pretty well south of, of, a lot of the conversation you're having here. Our, our northern border is Indian Hills Road. I, I do appreciate though, uh, getting to, to listen to everything that's going on. Uh, Norman, just, uh, I, I won't take a lot of your time. You know, our, our capital improvements are all funded by bonds. That's, that's the only way we can have the revenue to do that. Uh, just historically though, um, takeout last year, we had a two hundred student growth. The previous five years, Norman Public Schools, uh, literally has been flat at about sixteen thousand students. Uh, this year, um, it's just an anomaly for everybody. We're down about eighteen hundred. Uh, we're halfway through a hundred and eighty-six million dollar bond, but we are adding additional classrooms, but right now the forecast is not to, uh, we're, we're not in the need to add, um, you know, many, uh, especially an additional school, but, uh, additional classrooms, uh, that, that's not in our forecast unless something truly changes in Norman or just around Norman. So, I'm always open for questions, but, um, I, I don't want to take away from the great conversation you guys are having and the challenges and and the positive things that are happening in the metro area, even though we do, uh, share I thirty-five with all of you. So.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you joining us today and, and for your feedback and comments very much. So we're glad you could get your Mickey Mouse button off. Um, Piedmont, uh, Dr. James White, Summer Humphries, somebody from Piedmont District here with us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Cravens. It's James White.
Yeah. Hi, Mr. White.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, you all hosting this meeting. Um, um, I don't have a whole lot to add other than what, what's already been mentioned. We're, we're in a situation very similar to, uh, very similar to Deer Creek. Our growth has been tremendous. So the last few years, we averaged between two hundred and fifty and three hundred students a year. Um, up until this year, and we still enrolled that many, but, but we also lost quite a few. However, um, over half of our student population is in Oklahoma City and, and I think that's, that gets forgotten out here a lot. Um, three of our school sites are in, are in Oklahoma City. Three of our school sites are in, are in Oklahoma City. And all of our development, I would say all of it, the majority of our development is, is right along county line, 122nd in that area along the, along the turnpike. And those just continue to, those just continue to pop up. I believe last week, you talked about the notice, I believe last week we got three just in that, in that area. And so I would just ask, one, one thing we, we've done in the past on, and we just opened a new site two years ago, we're in constant building, but we're still having to put kids in portable because we just don't have the bonding capacity to, to keep up with that growth. But, but one thing, these developers, we, we don't always know out here who is developing this area. If it's, there's some way we could get that, where we can develop a relationship with those developers ahead of time. Our last two, two sites, we've been able to get land donated for a new school site that, that kind of meets both, both parties' needs, but we don't always know who the, who the developer is on them unless it's, unless it's more local.
Yeah. And Dr. White, just on the zoning notices that are sent, one of the things that you can get from the phone numbers that I provided you for city staff is you can get the development contacts. And I will tell you, if you've never attended a planning commission meeting, it's, it's, we see the same five or six people almost every meeting that represent the development community. It is not hard to track that information down. And so I, I don't think that'll be a challenge for you at, at all. I think, you know, again, having that person in your respective district who can kind of run, run lead on that for you, I think would go a long way to making that easier because, like I said, it's only about six people. I would say represent 90% of the applicants. I don't, I don't think I'm overstepping by saying that. That's pretty fair, so.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks for being with us today and thanks for your comments. Next person who'd RSVP'd is Union City, Dr. Becky Slather? Am I pronouncing that right? I hope not.
Yes. Hi. Hi, it's Slathour. Good morning.
Slathour, thank you. Thanks for being with us. What comments would you like to share with our group today?
I was just able to join you all just now. And so I just am interested in being a part of the conversation and seeing what, you know, is available for Oklahoma City and the Oklahoma City area and looking at growth. I just arrived here the end of September, so doing a little bit of catch-up work here in Union City. So anxious to build some networking and find some ways for Union City to be a part of the planning as well.
Well, we're happy to have you in Oklahoma and in our meeting today. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yukon, you've been patiently waiting and I appreciate that. Is someone from the district here want to speak on behalf of Yukon Public Schools?
Yes, this is Jim Fenrick. I'm CFO for the district. Dr. Simroth is unavailable today. We would probably echo primarily Piedmont. Our Oklahoma City area is north of Canadian River, west of County Line Road, and pretty much bordered by Northwest Highway. So that would be our area of growth that would be of concern. We just opened a new intermediate school this year and, and I'm not sure, you know, probably with the help of meetings like this, we would have probably had a better transition to get that one going. I think a lot of things were done late in, late in the stage, road, road improvement and so forth. But again, we would, we would be much, we would be very similar to what Piedmont experiences and how we would need a heads up on things.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments and for joining us today. Those are all the districts that I had, who had an RSVP person who'd signed up to, to speak or to participate today. I want to ask just real quickly before we kind of move into some general discussion, if there's anyone else who joined us who I had not called on that would like to be heard, we would certainly love to hear from you. So at this point, I'll pause just a moment and see if there's anybody who'd like to be heard. Excellent. Well, here, here's what I'd say. We, we've got, you know, five or 10 minutes here. I would really love to know what your thoughts as district representatives are on just my, you know, opined idea for how to improve communication. Do you all believe that an annual meeting would be helpful for you all to get an update from the Oklahoma City Planning Department on what development has occurred over the past year? What, what zoning changes have occurred? What Platts have been done preliminarily? What Platts are in the final stage? Where development is ongoing? I mean, I'm sort of envisioning in my mind a map that has green, yellow and red. Green means they're building. Yellow means it's coming. Red means they're working on it. Is that something, would that be a helpful tool? And if not, what would be? Or if there are other tools, what would those look like? And I'm, I'll just open it for anybody who'd like to jump in.
Commissioner Cravens, before, before somebody else jumps in, I might say, you know, it's, it strikes me that maybe it would be a good idea for us as a planning commission to select a committee to work with the districts. I mean, I, I'm not sure everything has to be decided in the next five or 10 minutes about where we go from here. I wonder if it might be helpful to select a committee who can meet with the representatives at, at another time or two and come back to us with a suggestion about where we go from here.
I, I, I think that's great. I think that's a great idea and we can certainly discuss that at our meeting today, you know, in, in sort of new business topic. But while we have these district representatives, I just want to get their feed, they're here. We, we are here to listen because we, we do want to be to the best of our ability. We want to be a part of the solution. So I, I'd love to just hear if you guys have thoughts about that or other ideas that we should consider.
I believe, I believe that annual updates would be, they'd be beneficial for me. So I don't want to speak for the group, but I, I'm 100% in on that.
For more, I would agree also. Also, Scott, is there a way to, or are the commissioners available for maybe meeting with school boards and work sessions or planning meetings occasionally?
Of course. And, and what I would tell you is your respective planning commissioner within your ward, I don't often try to speak for other commissioners, but I feel comfortable saying they are always happy to, to engage with folks in the public when they're asked to do so. And so if, if that's something that you'd like for them to attend, just reaching out to them is, is probably the best place to start. And if you don't know who that is, of course, that information's available on OKC.gov. You can find that out or by calling the city staff numbers that I provided. And Dr. Slathour, don't panic, I'm going to provide those numbers to you since you joined us late to make sure you get them at the end. So I'll hang with me and I'll make sure you get that, that information. Anybody else have feedback they want to give?
I think the meeting and the map are a good idea. Mustang would be on board with that.
And that's what.
That would be helpful to you?
Yes. Same for Deer Creek. The meeting was very helpful, but also linked to the map so that we could see the progress of things that are already committed. I think some of those, since I would agree with others, we really didn't know, we could talk about those things. Deer Creek did recently, which was help, very helpful. But I think a link to the map to know what's coming and an understanding of how to use that map would be very helpful.
Yeah. Well, please understand that in, in, in this meeting, in this discussion, I'm implicating other people who will be required to do the work that I'm suggesting. I would like to, to circle up with city staff and find out what is the most practical way, given their finite resources, for us to produce that. But for the conversation to move forward, we certainly wanted to hear from you all, would it be helpful or is it a waste of time? And I think it seems like we're getting a good consensus of feedback that that dialogue would be helpful and it would not be overly onerous once a year to gather in this manner, whether it's with you all or again, a representative from your district, to, to have this discussion and provide an update. And if you guys would have listened to the first hour of our meeting, which started at 10, regarding the capital improvement plans I've mentioned a couple of times, you would see that's exactly what was happening is we were being presented information from city staff on a variety of matters. Look, I think if that helps you plan and it makes us better partners to your districts in terms of a municipality, then that's a win. I will just tell you, my hope is that as a planning commission, we can discuss this at our meeting today, which is at 1:30, and come up with a recommendation that we can unanimously provide to both staff and city council, if necessary, that we've had this discussion and that we think these are proactive steps we can make to be good partners for our surrounding school districts. And, 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 you know, I hope that everybody will, will be as engaged as we've been and that you all will continue to engage with us if we ask you to do so. So I appreciate you all again very much for taking the time to be here and join us today. And then Dr. Slathour, for your benefit, let me give you a couple of phone numbers. The, first of all, OKC.gov is a place where you can get lots of information. There is a zoning map there that shows you what's going on in Oklahoma City in terms of what property is zoned for what use. We send out zoning notices when school districts are affected by potential zoning change. And if you receive one of those notices and you have questions, the best number you can call would be 297-2623. Again, that's 297-2623. And they can, staff can get the right person, get you pointed in the direction of who can answer any questions that you have about that zoning notice or other things. So I'm certainly happy to be helpful to you offline if I can. But again, thank you everyone for being here and joining us today. We are very grateful and I hope you see that we're at least trying to do our part to improve it, even if it takes multiple years to, to, to make an impact here. You got to start with one day and this day might as well be that day. So thank you all very much.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our special session agenda for today, it's actually our last item, is the presentation and discussion regarding proposed changes to sign regulations. Forgive me, Sarah Welch, I didn't know who was presenting this. We're going to talk about this. I assume Lisa Cronister, but I don't know if she's on with us.
Yeah. Mr. Cravens, I'm here. Thank you all for hanging in for my presentation. I'm going to go through it really quickly so that you can make sure and get a break before planning commission. Let me share my screen. Okay, everyone can see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So this, I'm speaking to you today to give you an update on where we are with the code update project, specifically signs. I wanted to get in front of you now because several of the planning commissioners have been very involved in the sign code update, but many haven't. And now that a draft is circulating to the stakeholder advisory team and will soon be circulating for public comment, I wanted to make sure that planning commission was updated on where we are and what types of provisions are in the code draft. So as you, if you hear from industry and constituents and citizens, you'll ha, you'll know, you have one idea about what they're talking about. So, so yeah, I'll, I'll review, you know, how we got to this point really quickly, what Plano KC and the Phase One report said about the code, talk about why we're dealing with sign code update now, and talk about the major provisions of the new code and then the next steps. So the, the main purpose of the code update project, as you probably remember, is to implement the recommendations from Plano KC. And for years, various stakeholders have been asking for improved efficiency in, in development to make the process not just easier, but more effective so that, you know, we, the city, we, planning commission, we, developers, everybody can get the best type of development they can possibly get. For Phase Two, we hired a new consultant, White and Smith Planning and Law Group. Mark White is our main contact. He was our speaker at the Commissioner Training in January. He's an attorney and has written, signed, has written code all over the country with a specific expertise in signs. So the guiding principles for our work have always been, you know, the end result has to be user-friendly. It has to make good development easy. It needs to update our existing codes with best practices, avoid non-conformities, it needs to be enforceable. And it needs to, when we say right-sized, it needs to fix the things that need to be fixed as far as it needs to go in that, but it might not have to go in too much detail to be effective. So signs, why now? Earlier this year, the City Manager's Office and City Council asked planning to accelerate the updates to the sign code. You may be aware of, you know, there were several contentious billboard applications, one on Hepner Parkway, one on 39th, 944, up on Memorial, but the issues were essentially the same. You know, where are billboards appropriate? Is, how and if are S P U Ds the right tool to achieve them? So in response to those applications, City Council passed a moratorium that banned billboards, banned the use of P U Ds to achieve a billboard through November of this year, and it was just recently extended until May of next year. The, we, in that process, we heard from sign industry folks and business folks also wanting to understand, get more clarity on, you know, where, where, where the city was on billboards and how they should be allowed and regulated. Then there were also specific Plano KC policies and some work from Phase One of the code update that addressed these. And so that, the highlights are mine, obviously, there are, there are several policies in Plano KC that addressed signs and, you know, specifically saying we needed to reduce sign clutter, saying we needed to restrict new billboards or eliminate the number of existing ones, consider new standards about the size, height and number. So this wasn't the first time we rolled out this slide to the stakeholder advisory team. People thought that planning was anti-sign, but it's not that planning is anti-sign, it's the, the comp plan asked us, first, it specifically suggested we reduce, and second, at a minimum, it asked that we re-study all of the sign limits. Then the Phase One of the code update, it also recommended a highly graphic and user-friendly layout. If you've looked at our current sign code in Chapter Three, it's anything but that. It also pointed out that we needed to get to content neutral sign standards, and that issue has been at the crux of various legal challenges, not just Oklahoma City, but across the country over the past couple of years. Then of course, provide for clear procedures for review. So if we can't, we're back to the content, content friendly, most of the existing sign code is structured around the definition of accessory and non-accessory signs. So accessory signs are if there is a business or product on your property, then your sign related to it is an accessory sign. But a non-accessory sign is typically advertising. It's advertising something that's not on your property. And, but if we are eliminating this definition of accessory and non-accessory, if we're moving to a content neutral approach, then what, what can we regulate? We can regulate everything else about a sign. We can regulate how many there are, where they go, how big they are, if and how they light up and move, what they're made of, how tall they are, so, so much about a sign can still be regulated even if you're not talking about the content. So with, given the Plano KC recommendations and the Phase One report, planning and the consultant met with many, many focus groups in the spring, composed of, you know, we talked to architects, engineers, planning commissioners, city council people, developers, sign industry and outdoor advertising industry people. We also have met, I think, four or five times by now. We also have met, I think, four or five times by now with the stakeholder advisory team. This was a team of technical experts that was invited by the mayor to serve and to help. Review sign code drafts and help us bet what types of provisions it would include. We've also met separately several times with the policy committee, which is made up of the city council and planning commission members. Of the SAT. So planning commission members are Mr. Cravens, Ms. Powers and Mr. Highsmith. And city council members are Ms. Nice, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Stone. So with all that, we have arrived at a, a first draft of the code. The approach will be to remove signs out of chapter three, article five. And put them into chapter fifty nine. So put them into the zoning and planning code. It would be article sixteen, which would be the last available article of chapter fifty nine. It would regulate signs by physical feature, not by content. It would regulate signs based on their street typology and their zoning. Right now, most signs that. So they're either regulated on this definition of accessory or non accessory. Or they're regulated on street frontage. Regarding almost regardless of use or building size. It combines, the new code will combine all the regulations for signs into tables. So it's like a one page shop. Where you can find everything you need to know about what is allowed for your sign on one page in the code. And it's will be full of illustrations to show exactly what we're talking about in various provisions. So just basic layout, general changes. A lot of pieces are just being relocated. They're not being substantively changed. The new code defines five physical types of signs. So freestanding signs attached. Then miscellaneous incidental billboards. When you see the ordinance come through in the spring, it will contain length edited edits for other chapter fifty nine sections. To try to strike out. And reword the accessory and non accessory language that appears in very many sections. For example, non accessory signs are a use unit, but they won't be in the new code. Design districts, for the most part are untouched because. All of the design districts have. Their reg, have separate regulations and guidelines that are embedded in the design district and we're not touching those. The only exception is Bricktown, which Bricktown's. Regulations are in chapter three, so we're moving them to this article sixteen. We're also making some important changes to murals. The Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, working with Arts Commission for years with various stakeholder groups. Has been working on some ideas to make the process for murals simpler. And more objective. So the current proposal for that is to. Require a sign permit for them, but to not require Arts Commission review. So the new code will live online, very similar to Muni Code now. You'll go, go online. And click around to find your section. Some specific issues I wanted to make you aware of regarding five different signs. So billboards are going to be. Define, you know, regulated by a physical definition. Right now they're regulated by, well, is it non accessory? So we'll have nothing to do with whether or not they're advertising just a, a size and a, and a structural description. They will only be allowed in on freeways, freeway defined as. High traffic road that's accessed by on and off ramps. So interstate highways, for example. But certain scenic corridors are proposed to be exempt. We already have an existing scenic corridor and that's the. I forty downtown scenic highway. We're proposing to extend that to Hefner Parkway and portions of I thirty five. Spacing, we're increased. Oh yeah, that's what I was just saying about. The extent, I thirty five, northeast tenth, northeast fifty nine. The increasing the spacing, the spacing requirement now is twelve hundred feet. So increasing it to fifteen hundred feet would obviously result in fewer. And then we're going to measure that. Make it clear that we're measuring that spacing on, on both sides of the freeway. Again, in an attempt to reduce the number. Then we include provisions for relocation. If somebody wants to, to bill, to install a new billboard. They have to, to remove. They have to consider, they have to, that will be assessed as though they're moving an existing one that they already have and they're completely removing another one. And the benefit to the sign company for doing that is that they will get to locate it within the twelve hundred feet instead of fifteen hundred feet. So I've, I've gone through the billboard section pretty quickly. This is the same presentation that was in your, your packet. For today, I've got to pretty quickly and. You know, we, we have debated all of these provisions with very many folks over very many months. But that said, I will say everything you're saying, seeing here, you know, this is a draft. It is a proposal. And we actively want to hear back what everybody thinks. Also, outdoor advertising companies are also reviewing this draft as we speak. That's billboards. PUDs, the, the new language would. Would state that a PUD can't, it, it, the sign provisions have to comply with the. Existing underlying district regulations to make clear that the PUD is not the tool to allow bigger, more signs. It would prohibit billboards in C three and CHC zoning. And a, if somebody wanted to increase their signage allowance in a. PUD or S P U D, they would have to do it via a master sign plan. Other applicants for larger building sites could also. Submit a master sign plan that would allow them. A little more and a little larger size. Poll signs at the draft, you may have heard rumors that the draft is proposing to eliminate poll signs and it is. So they would be prohibited except for freeways. So the only freestanding sign, type of freestanding sign that would be allowed is a monument sign. Now it wouldn't require that existing poll signs come down. It just, just would not permit new poll signs. Measurement and allocation will now be tied to the building size and the street type. So if you're a large building on a. Major arterial, you would get a large sign allowance. If you're a small building on a main street, you get a small sign allowance. It would, same thing with height. If you're on a, on a busier street, you get a taller sign, taller monument sign. Than if you're on a, a smaller downtown or neighborhood street. And then there are provisions for the way sign area is measured. Right now it's measured. As a simple rectangle, but this would provide for a, a multi sided polygon. That should clear up a lot of confusion that happens at the sign permit stage. EMDs, there are provisions explicitly allowing EMDs for non residential, non residential uses in residential districts such as churches and schools. With limits, specifically distance limits between houses. Then it would reduce the size and increase the spacing for EMDs in commercial uses. So our schedule is, the stakeholder advisory team is looking at this code draft right now. Then it will incorporate their comments and, you know, there's internal review going on also. And hopefully get it out for a public comment in December. Then take the ordinance language to a design review. I could mention that. Their provisions aren't changing, but we do have to touch some of their ordinance language to make it refer to chapter fifty nine, article sixteen, S F S, chapter three. Then we hope to be a planning commission in March and then at city council by the end of April. Again, that's driven by the fact that the extended moratorium expires in May twenty twenty one. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to give Jeff Butler a moment to see if there's anything he thought I missed.
No, I don't think so, Lisa. Thank you.
Lisa, great job. I would say I did get your emails regarding the, the draft and I'll, I'll, I'll go through that. I haven't had a chance to do that yet. And I'm sure that's true for all commissioners. Time. Because we only have a few minutes here before the planning commission pre meeting starts with staff. I would just say, have you circulated a draft of that to all planning commission members, even the ones that are not on the SAT?
I have not. I.
I think I would go ahead and ask you to do that if you don't mind. That way they have a chance to review it and then we could discuss it. You know, if we've got a little time here, we could discuss it at, during the kind of new business section of a future meeting or something. Probably makes sense. So.
That will do it.
Does that seem to make sense to everybody else, planning commission wise? Everybody good with that? Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. There is no action item on this either. This has just all been informational. I'll just ask quickly if there's any planning commissioners who have any thoughts or comments on anything we've talked about today before we adjourn.
Yeah, this is planning commissioner Henkel. Surely you didn't think I was going to go quietly. Looking at your list of the stakeholder advisory team. There is nobody in the billboard industry on that list. There is nobody in the commercial sign industry on that list. I've talked to multiple people on this whole deal. You haven't talked to the restaurant association. You haven't talked to the petroleum association people. Haven't talked to the greater downtown chamber. Definitely have involved the billboard companies. I know Bill Condon's been on a couple of the meetings, but all the other billboard operators in Oklahoma City that I've visited with in the last couple of days. Have said that they know nothing about the meetings that have been going on. As well as the commercial sign people, they have no idea that this is coming. They were involved in a. Initial conversation in the basement of the building across the street. A year and a half ago, and none of them know any of this is on the way there. So. I would suggest if you're going to send drafts out, you might send drafts out to some of the major sign companies in town, the. Whistlers and the Tylers, we haven't gotten any of this. None of our people were invited to any of these meetings. Like I said, I'm. You're picking on an industry, but that's another conversation and another day. So. I'll just leave it at that, but please make everybody who is a stakeholder in this aware. Especially the restaurant people. Look at how this is going to affect the signings that they're allowed to have. To create commerce in a time when they're having a really hard time making it. The petroleum people are the same way. So. I mean, like I said, I can go on and on and on about this and, and I will another day. I know we got time constraints, but. Thanks for listening.
No, that's, that's great feedback, Matt. I, what I would say is, Lisa, create me if I'm wrong. Because I, I actually wasn't aware of this until I think it was our second meeting. But you referenced it here in the conversation. I want to make sure everybody heard that. Would you just. Sort of state again how that advisory team was selected for everyone's benefit?
This is Jeff. Let me, if I, if I might respond. So the, the stakeholder advisory team is for the entire code update. So. And, and the, the sign code is, is just one piece of that. The sign code actually would have come at a much later date, but because of the moratorium and the billboard issue. It was, it was felt that we should go ahead and move forward on it. So. So the stakeholder advisory team consists of people who are just kind of generally in the know in terms of as far as having development expertise, neighborhood expertise, commercial development expertise. Planning expertise and so forth. I'm not sure. So I'm, I'm sad to hear your comments, Matt, because we had made a, an effort to reach out to all these sign companies and we did have. A focus group specifically for them and heard from your company and several others. We reached out to all the sign companies that we were aware of in the, in the metro. And asked them to continue to participate and have continued to engage them. So I'm not sure where the disconnect has happened, but we will look into that. We have had several sign company, in fact, in each of our SAT committee meetings, we've had sign companies there. So I'm not sure why others, some have. Lost track of it and others have remained in the loop.
I have sat in on every one of these meetings and. Other than Troy Schweinberg from Metro Signs and Bill Condon. And we heard from Sean Whistler one time, we really haven't heard anything from any sign company in town. So. And I'm on the Oklahoma Sign Association Executive Board. So I just had a meeting four days ago with. Twelve of the biggest players in the state and none of them, none of them know this is going on. I told them.
Well, if you want to send us the, the names, we can certainly reach out to them and send them copies of the, of the draft code. The stakeholder advisory team is important, but what the next step is, is. Well, currently actually we're, we're actively seeking comment from, from sign companies. And then of course the public comment. Phase is, is happening immediately after. So. It, it's, it's far from too late. In fact, this is, if they haven't been involved up till now, this is the appropriate time to get involved and give us their comments. So. And if you, Matt, or, or any of the planning commissioners are aware of somebody. Please send, send them our way and we will, we will get, we will get them involved. There's certainly. Certainly no intent to exclude people, quite the opposite. I'm disappointed to hear that there are people who aren't aware of it.
Where would we send a request to so they could get what we just saw and see what the proposed updates are?
Put them in contact directly with Lisa.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll send the planning commission a email with links to where this presentation. Or a similar presentation is on our webpage and a copy of the draft is also on the webpage. And copies of the SAT meeting minutes and video recordings are on the website.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Lisa, very much for putting this together. Any other final comments?
I, I just have one quick question. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a tangent, but. Do we have a list of the actual, I, I know it says city council and planning under policy committee. Do we actually have a list of the people that are on that committee? I think a few people have asked and I just haven't heard the answer to that yet.
That would be, so let's see, the planning commissioners would be you, Mr. Highsmith, Ms. Powers. And Mr. Cravens, and then the, the council members on the SAT, which are also part of the policy committee. Are Mr. Stone, Ms. Nice and Mr. Cooper.
I apologize for maybe sounding really dumb right now. Have we had a meeting yet?
Yes.
Yeah, you were there.
Yeah, I think I, I think I'm confusing my policy committee meetings with my SAT meetings maybe a little bit.
Possibly.
Yeah, okay. I, I'll get that clear. Ignore me.
Yeah, we, we had one meeting. It was only one ASA, so no worries. And we, we intend to have another one actually. And the purpose of those meetings is so that the. The, the people who will actually be voting on it can, can give some direction on some of the more, I guess, controversial aspects of the code and. And really kind of flesh out some of those and hear different arguments and make some decisions on that. So we'll, we expect to have another one here. In fact, we're trying to schedule it.
Yeah, it's next Friday and ASA accepted it. He might not have understood what he was being invited to.
Thank you for accepting ASA.
Okay. Well, everybody, thank you very much for your time. I know that was. Okay. Well, everybody, thank you very much for your time. I know that was a lot of stuff. At this point, it's twelve thirty, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second. A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
Scott, I have to just, I have to step away, take care of something. It might be one fifteen before I log back on.
Understood. We'll, we'll wait on you till one thirty.
I'll, I'll be back by one thirty.
All right, man.